And welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, January 24th, 6:30 PM. Please rise for our invocation and then followed by a moment of silence. And during the moment of silence, I'd like to have everyone remember Mr. Bruce White, who was instrumental in a lot of things that happened here in our region. Passed away, his funeral was today.
Let us bow heads for prayer. Father, we thank you for the grace to be able to gather once again for our town council, Chief Custos, and those who are serving in positions to make the town better, to keep the town safe. We pray, Father, for all the council persons that you would give them the grace to lead this town. We thank you for the grace of collaboration and unity. We pray, Father, for the White family, that you would encourage their hearts and that you would be with them. Bless, oh God, this gathering so that there is effective business and that there's choices and decisions that are made that are helpful for the common good. We ask your blessings, oh God, upon, Lord, those who are working in the town, the school systems, leaders, and those who are officials. Bless us, oh God, during this time as we make efforts to make this community healthier, better, and all things that are necessary for our growth and development. We ask these prayers in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, I'm over to silence, please. Is there a veteran in the audience tonight? No? Oh, would you please lead us in our pledge tonight, sir?
At the laser's flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Span.
Present.
Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Minchuck.
Sure.
Mrs. Usalak.
Present.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. White. And Mr. Bellin.
Here.
By present.
By present, we have a quorum. I will announce that Mr. Hardaway is in DC, Washington DC, traveling with the NERPC group. And I heard from Mr. White tonight, he's not feeling well. He had injured his neck and it's acting up on him, and so he won't be present tonight either. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, remonstrations. Our first item tonight is Black History Month proclamation, celebrating Black History in the month of February. And our own Shonda Flowers is going to approach the podium and read the proclamation for us tonight. Shonda works in the Town Courts Office and has worked for the Town of Maryville for quite some time now, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
President. Town of Maryville's proclamation, state of Indiana. The Town Council of Maryville designating the month of February as Black History Awareness Month. Whereas although African Americans have been part of the fabric of American life since early canonical time and recognition of their contributions to the making of this nation, were for generations ignored, minimized, and consciously suppressed. And whereas born to parents who were former slaves, Dr. Carter G. Woodson spent his childhood working in the coal mines of Kentucky, enrolled in high school at the age of 20, graduated within two years, and went on to earn a doctorate from Howard, excuse me, Harvard University. And whereas, in his studies, Dr. Woodson noted the fact that the history books of the day largely ignored Black Americans except in isolated instances, and those instances served primarily to reflect the inferior social position assigned to the African American community. And whereas, resolving to write Black Americans into nation's history, Dr. Woodson established the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History in 1915, now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, and founded the Journal of Negro History in 1916. And whereas, as a result of Dr. Woodson's pioneering work in completing rather than writing American history, Americans now have an increased awareness of the contributions of individuals of African American heritage. And whereas, in 1926, Dr. Woodson inaugurated the second week of February as Negro History Week, as a device to focus, I apologize, focus the national attention on the contributions of Black people throughout our history. And whereas, it was appropriate that Negro History Week was expanded to Black History Month in 1976, the year of our nation's bicentennial. And whereas, because of the efforts of men and women like Dr. Woodson, Black history is becoming a part of mainstream and mainstream history and part of the common heritage of all Americans. And whereas, the tapestry of this unique rainbow nation of different nationalities and ethnic and racial backgrounds is made richer as a result. And whereas, the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana, is committed to diversity, inclusion, equity through the continued educational programs for all town employees. Practice daily are recently signed and displayed diversity and equity statement, we would like to make the following resolution. Whereas, the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana, is committed to diversity, inclusion, and equity through the continued, I apologize, I'm reading that again, sorry about that. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, does hereby proclaim that each February going forward, commencing with February 2023, shall be designated and recognized as Black History Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to observe, discuss, and educate others with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and other activities about the value and contributions that Black Americans have made to the betterment of our nation, state, and more specifically, our hometown of Maryville. We also encourage all residents to participate in our inaugural Black History Celebration Dinner scheduled February 23rd, 2023, at the Mike Anderson Event Center inside the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Signed by the following Town Council members and attested to by the Clerk Treasurer this 24th day of January 2023, Rick Bella, Council President, Margaret Usalak, Councilwoman.
Thank you, beautiful job. Counsel, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usalak, for approval of the Black History Month proclamation. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the letter from the Town Engineering Administrator and Director of Public Works, Steve King. Mr. Reardon, do you have that letter for the record?
I do, sir. It's, as Council President Bellin said, it's from Engineering Administrator King. President Rick Bell and Town Council, the town's professional staff have reviewed the December 22 billing for work completed at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and we concur Core Construction's recommendation in approving payment for application number 27 to the vendors listed below in the total amount of $135,448.86. The vendors' names and applicable amounts are as follows. Core Construction, $11,848.86. Sweeney Electric, $1,100. Dant Clayton Corporation, $112,500. $500,000, pardon me. The total, $135,448.86.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usalak for approval. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Moving on tonight to the amendment agreement between the Town of Maryville's Stormwater for Accounting Services. Madam Clerk Treasurer. Since this kind of pertains to your office, I thought it'd be nice if you could kind of give us a synopsis.
Just an agreement between the Stormwater for them providing utility services for the Town with the Clerk Treasurer to pay for services that we provide to Stormwater.
Okay. Anything else that we should add, Joe, for the record?
No, they, they, they provide professional services to the, to the utility as well as books and records. So at this time, this agreement looks in order, looks proper, and should be voted on by the Town Council.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Usalak for approval of the amended agreement between the Town of Maryville and the Maryville Stormwater Utility for services for providing accounting services for the utility. Any questions or comments on the motion? Is the voice vote okay, Joe?
Voice vote is fine, yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable voucher approval for January 24th, and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of January 10th, and also January 17th.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, would you like to second?
Yes, I will second.
Second by Mrs. Usalak for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. That motion carries. Use your assigned copy. Okay. Before moving on to the committee assignments, I thought it'd be good to pass out what the committee assignments are. I know we've talked about this in the workshop, council, and as I mentioned, there's not very many changes, so I just thought I'd pass this out, and what I'll do, Kelly, would you mind passing that down? Thank you. What I'll do is, as we call, the standing committee reports tonight, I'll read the entire list of committee members so that everyone else can hear that, okay? So moving on to budget and finance, the, that committee's staying the same with Mr. Hardaway as chairman, and members are Mr. Pettit and Mr. Minchuck. Is there anything to add in Richard's absence tonight, Pat?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay, council affairs, that committee also stays the same with Mr. Pettit as the chair, and members Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Usalak.
Mr. President, we do have some pending ordinances that Mr. Svetnov has been working on that we discussed in the workshop. Joe, can we have those for the first meeting in February for approval, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That will be a total of, I think, 13 ordinances?
13 ordinances. Sheila, do we have a planning commission in February? I asked you that before, but you said possibly no.
Possibly no. I was waiting for one person to come, and I haven't heard from them.
Let's, Joe, if you don't mind, let's have a council affairs that first Tuesday in February at 5:00. If they have a planning commission, we'll stick around, but 13 ordinances, we probably ought to revisit those one more time.
Sounds good.
I'm not sure, Pat, what day that February is. What's the date of that? We'll do it at 5:00. Check my. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Moving on to Public Works and Utilities, that committee also remains the same from last year. The chairman is Mr. Minchuck, and members are Mr. Span and Mrs. Usalak.
Yes, Mr. President. I will be having a meeting, a sit-down meeting here, probably when Steve gets back to work with the employees, going over a few housekeeping items, but more importantly, it looks like someone's going to get about three inches of snow, so please keep your cars off the streets, cooperate with the plow truck drivers best you can, stay out of their way. It looks like we're going to maybe get a little bit more over the weekend, so everybody just kind of take your time, and let's be a little cautious out there. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, town beautification, chairman is Mr. Pettit, members are Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Minchuck. Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Environmental affairs, chairman is Mr. White, members are Mr. Span and Mrs. Usalak. Is there anything to add, Mr. Reardon, for Mr. White?
No, sir, there is not.
Just wish him a speedy recovery, for sure. Personnel policy and employee benefits, chairman is Mr. Hardaway, members are Mrs. Usalak and Mr. Pettit. Public safety, the chairman is Mr. Minchuck, members are Mr. Span and Mrs. Usalak. Mr. Minchuck.
We will have a meeting scheduled on the second at 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Economic development, the chairman is Mr. Pettit, and members are Mr. Hardaway, Mr. Minchuck, Deanna Patina, and Jennifer Dauphin. Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, at the redevelopment commission meeting earlier, we approved a resolution for a second draw with the Holiday Properties Group for some improvements that they've done to refresh the council's memory. Several years ago, we authorized a $4.1 million bond issue. They drew down a million dollars to construct 96th Avenue in Massachusetts, which serves the Amazon facility, and then they had some additional, they wanted an additional draw, so this will be, to my knowledge and Pat's knowledge, this will be the last draw. That resolution passed unanimously at the redevelopment commission. And again, they are, this draw is third in line after we pay our debt service and interest payments on the first two bond issues in the Broadway Tiff. This would be the third payment, but this will be the last one, correct, Pat?
Yes, sir, that's our understanding.
That's all.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, this committee, I made some changes, the chairwoman is Mrs. Usalak, the new members are Mr. Span and Mr. White. Mrs. Usalak.
Yes, for the public's information, all the five parks in Maryville have been rehabbed, and I'm waiting for bids from Torrance regarding the shelter at Rosenbaum Park, and that's it. It's the roof of the shelter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, chairman remains Mr. Hardaway, and the members are Vicky Bannell, Adra Recall. Anything to add, Mr. Reardon?
No, sir, not at this point.
Okay. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, keeping that committee the same for this year, the chairman's Mr. Pettit, members are Mr. White and Mr. Minchuck. Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we, as we honored in the moment of silence, we lost a pioneer in Maryville, and I can still remember to this day when I got the call from Bruce White himself, saying that he would give us the $10 million gift for the community center. It's an amazing family, was an amazing man, he's done so much for the town, as did his mom and dad. With that being said, Mr. President, I'm going to call, I'm going to change the meeting date for the committee. It was supposed to be Thursday night, but I want to gather some other individuals as we discussed at the last committee, sit down and work on an agenda with Pat, so I'm going to call it for January 31st, which is a week from tonight, at 4:30 up at the center, and I've invited Mr. Svetnov to come in. We want to visit on the sponsorships, on the gift and the draw that the Whites graciously gave us. We need to talk about some capital things, Jeff, that we talked about. I'm going to get Core in there, along with Structure Point, so Pat and I are going to sit down and put the agenda together for tomorrow, so that'll be January 31st at 4:30 at the center.
Thank you. Special Projects Committee, which includes a food and beverage tax, diversity training, 4th of July celebration, and now the dinner, or Black History Celebration. The chairman's going to remain, Mr. Hardaway, with members Mr. Pettit and Mr. Minchuck. Mr. Reardon, would you please go over for us the, where we are with table sales for the event? I know we've sold a lot of tables and getting a lot of participation for the Black History Celebration Dinner.
Thank you, Mr. President. The long and short of it is that we have, through today, 27 tables sold, so in terms of attendees, 27 times eight. We're encouraged by that. I can say that everybody's embraced the idea, and the phones continue to ring. This is an easy sell, if you will. Not surprising to those of us who are here at Town Hall every day, out in the community, and it's viewed as it should be, is a continuation of the town's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're looking for a really exciting event, you know, be reminded that it's an inaugural event, but the program's coming together. There's a meet tomorrow, you know, to continue conversation about the event, and we're really looking forward to the success of the event. You can see, pardon me, you can see the banners up here. If anyone is interested in a single ticket, they're available at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center at the front desk, they're available here at Town Administration. If you're thinking you'd like to purchase a table, the table seats eight, it's $600. And, you know, as the flyer says, and you see posted, pardon me, in Town Hall, music, entertainment, we have a dynamic speaker, dancing, and of course, great food.
So our speaker, keynote speaker is Alonzo Weems, right?
Yes.
And Dr. Dan Lackey's going to be our emcee for the evening, and music throughout the entire evening. And here's what I like about the event, it's not political. So, I'm not speaking, Richard's not speaking, it's not a political event, that's not how it's billed, we don't want it like that. This is truly to honor Black history, and I'm glad that we're putting our money where our mouth is, so to speak, as Shonda read tonight. We're doing something great for the community, so I hope to see you all there. This is not a political event, this is a nice celebration evening, so. Thank you, Pat, for the updates.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Big team.
Moving on tonight to Department and Commission reports. So Leonard is not here, but he's our representative, serving on the Lake County Solid Waste Management District, and tonight we need to reappoint him, if that's our desire, and I will entertain a motion from the council to do that.
Motion to support Leonard White again?
Yeah, motion by Mr. Span to reappoint Mr. White, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Reardon, please notify the commission for our appointment. The Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, our representative today is Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Hardaway's on the executive committee of that commission, and why he's in Washington, DC right now, and he was just appointed to be the chairman of the board.
Yeah, a motion for Mr. Hardaway. Second. He loves that.
Close by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Span. Thank you, gentlemen, to reappoint Mr. Hardaway. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Mr. Matt Lake. Welcome back, Matt.
Thanks. Well, my voice is a little hoarse today.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
But I will be, well, VS Engineering just completed plans for 69th and Connecticut Street. We're working with the school board to get an easement from them. Once they, we get the easement, then we'll put it out for bid, and then we'll start construction on that project. Also, working with FEMA on our audit, this is a five-year cycle of visit audit that we go through for CRS recertification and ranking. We also are submitting a cost application to the Kellimette River Basin Development Commission. This will be for construction for the Hickory Ridge Lake Apartment Regional Basin Project. Gulf construction is awaiting construction of some structures, primarily some concrete box culvers to be made so they can begin on the Tiny Ditch Crossings Project, which will run from US, just south of US 30, all the way to 73rd Avenue. Every single crossing will get replaced per our design. Also met with Robinson Engineering. We're looking to update our infrastructure mapping, since we've had a lot of development, and we got a couple gaps here and there in our infrastructure mapping. This includes the detention basins as well, so we want to get everything mapped and up to date, and want to get back to, risk tree removal, too. We finished most of the north end, so we're looking towards Turkey Creek will be the next subdivision to focus on, so I'll get with you, Jeff, on that. We'll discuss the tree removal within the right of way that are, trees that are dead or dying or dangerous. They've already been inventoried. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on tonight to the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority. Currently, Mr. Reardon is serving as our representative. I'll entertain a motion from the council to keep him on for now.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Span, to reappoint Mr. Reardon to be our representative on the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Reardon.
Thank you. I'm going to yield my time to Ms. Shine, so she has an opportunity to make a presentation. And I'll discuss activity at our upcoming Friday meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next item on the agenda, gentlemen, is the, and ladies, is the Fire Territory Board. We do need to appoint two new members to serve for 2023. I'll open the floor up for your recommendations. Oh, sorry, currently serving is Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span.
I would recommend that we keep both of them.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion, to keep Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span for the Territory Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Usalak.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Usalak, with a second by Mr. Pettit, to retain Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span as our two representatives to the Fire Territory Board. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, back to the Stormwater Management Board with Mr. Lake. Do we have, I see on your list, do we have to approve the appointment or the recommendation?
We do.
One board member we have.
One board member is up, I believe.
I'll do that under new business.
Oh, okay.
That's on our list. Thank you, Bill Patrick, John. Department reports. Anything else to add, Mr. Lake?
Not at this time, I yield my time to Sheila.
We're all yielding time. Is this Congress now? Chief Nusis.
No report.
No report. Ms. Shine, you have the floor.
Well, Mr. President, I won't need that much time that was yielded to me, I can tell you that.
There's a little drama here because we think it's well worth it.
Use a microphone, Pat, please. Okay, and let's get, make sure Sheila has one.
All right, yep, Sheila, you can, I'll bring this portable mic over there. Ms. Shine and her staff put together an annual report of their activity, our activity in the Department of Planning and Building. It's a great report. So what we decided to do is pull from that report, highlights from that report, you know, for example, the permit fees generated from that department, 218 to 222, $1,260,716.36. Major commercial additions in 2022 alone. There's a list. Total, 146 million... Total, $146,524,714 in Maryville. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Shine to walk us through what's on the boards. Sheila?
So I'd like to start off by thanking individuals. I'd like to thank the council, Mr. Bella and president. And I also like to thank every department here in the town, because every department in this town supports, if it wasn't for all the departments, the Planning and Building Department couldn't function. So I'd like to thank every department in the town. I'd like to thank our town attorney, and kudos to the development team.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to start off by just saying that...
And the microphone, please.
Yes, there you go. Here's your mic.
Yes, my mic.
I can find, you know, I'll play the band, roll the band away, it's fine.
No, I'm fine. As Pat pointed out earlier, he's, in 2018, we did 606,000. 19, we did 544,492, 605,156,20, and 748,554,21. And this is permit fees alone, this does not include our contractor's license, home occupation permits, and all the other fees that we generate through the office. This year, we did 1,260,000, 1,267,16,000 in building fees alone. And that is due to the building, the 1 million square foot building, generated a permit fee of 26, 326,000. The other building was 88,000. And then what these people do is, they come along after they build the shell of the building, and they take out an interior remodel permit. So that was basically what generated those fees. So on the other side, this is the valuation side. This is what we did in 2018, 2019, 2020, 21, and 2022. The total project cost for the evaluation was 182,923,238 of evaluation, valuation that was placed in the town. So that's quite a bit of investment that the town has made this year. So if we look over to our new construction, we kind of broke it down to new construction and residential. Residential was 84,938. Commercial, 43,314. And for a total, this is all new construction. So you look at residential warehouse, Williams-I Institute, True Hotel, school projects, storage, retail, and automotive maintenance.
Pardon me?
So we had quite a few interior remodels that had to do with major commercial additions. And these are, these are existing buildings that took out, for example, Amazon. Amazon was built the year before, but they came back and they got fueling the stations out there. And that was for, that was a 4.1 million additional investment. So these are schools, the unions did something. We, all, this is all major commercial additions, all of these hospitals and different people that pull other permits. So we had a tremendous year. We're looking forward to doing more, better. And once again, I'd like to thank everyone, because if it wasn't for the entire town, we work with every, the Planning and Building Department does work with every department here, from the courts, to the police, to the fire, to the Clerk Treasur's Office, all we worked, so I'd like to thank them too. They are, everyone had a part in this. Thank you.
Thank you to you too, Sheila, and your staff, for the outstanding work.
Oh, I have one more thing that I'd like to boast about a little bit.
Absolutely.
Our inspectors are now mobile.
Ah, good.
They can log on, we, they, they got trained, they have gotten trained, and they can log on here. We, and we put the permits, the inspections inside here, and they can wake up at their house, log on. The map comes up to tell them where to go, and they're all set for that. We're just waiting for our data. Right now, they're using their home data and their own hotspots. But we're waiting to get our data on, and once that happens, they'll be able to use it as anywhere and go.
Very nice.
All right, thank you.
I just want to add, before we move on, that, you know, every year, I sit here and I have the angst about committee assignments. Who should be on the committees? What are we doing? How do we move them around? And as you guys heard, I didn't move anybody around too much this year. And there's a reason for that. If you look at our trajectory, that is an arrow going at a diagonal straight up. And that's what's happening in the town. So whatever we're doing, guys, as a team, let's just keep doing it. And thank you for your hard work, each and every one of you, department heads, council members, commission members, et cetera. Let's keep the hard work going. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to general orders. First reading, we have ordinance 23-01. It's an ordinance adding a fire inspector to the actual salary ordinance, and adding the new patrolman position as we negotiated with the FOP. Trista, anything to add? Or Kelly, our Clerk Treasurer, anything to add?
No, just needed to be adjusted to add those two positions that were left off the last salary ordinance, and I think this is complete now.
Anything to add, Tristan?
The fire inspector was under his own ordinance during the year of 2022, so it was appropriate to get him into the list here with everyone else. But it's, there's no gap time. He was covered under that prior ordinance. As council is aware, then, during the FOP negotiations, the patrolman special first class was adjusted. That is reflected here. Your approval today to this ordinance will then complete that FOP contract negotiation. This, of course, then relates into the pension payments, and so on and so forth.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of ordinance 23-01.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Mr. Span for approval. Any other discussion from the council? Excuse me. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call.
Sure. Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
And President Bella?
Yes.
Five in favor?
Five in favor, and the motion carries. Thank you. Excuse me. Moving on tonight to resolutions, 23-05. It's a resolution in town of Maryville, transferring monies within the budget, 2023 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak. Trista, any further explanation for this one? Or from Madam Clerk Treasurer?
No, just need to clean up, do a little cleanup and transfer funds appropriately for the police department.
Appropriately so to have the salary for that special first-class patrolman in his own line. Line 122...
This is just part of it, though, right?
Yeah, it's just part of it. Yes. Line 122 is listed, it appears to be an unused appropriation line at this point. I've contacted the bookkeeper to make sure that that would be the appropriate number to use. She certainly can change it if it's not. And the amount that you see listed here is the amount of a current patrol salary, so that it can be removed from the current patrolman lump sum line. There is an additional appropriation being prepared for you for your next meeting, to supplement then to the rest of that 77,500 salary, which will then tie out the rest of the salary needed for that person. You'll be adding that amount to that line, and that will cover the rest of the year.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments from the council? This is a resolution, a voice vote is appropriate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan voucher for January 24th. It is that pink paper in your packets. They have several claims here. The amount is, looks like, wow, could we type that any smaller?
16,000.
16,604.
15.
And 15 cents, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak for approval. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to BZA and large gathering actions. I'm going to turn the floor back over to Mrs. Shine.
So, Mr. President, we have one petitioner. Attorney Anderson, would you come forward, please? So, special exception approval, the petitioner is Crossworld Plaza LLC. The owner is Crossroads Plaza LLC. And this is a variance of use to allow a retail sale space located at 6110 Broadway in an M2 industrial zoning district. The BZA placed the conditions as follows, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only, and the hours of operation were 11:00 to, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval to allow a retail store on 20.606 acres in an M2 limited industrial corridor zoning district. Petitioner is proposing to have Trader Bucks Flea Market at the vacant site. Petitioner states that this 30,000 square feet store located in the west end of the plaza would help to revitalize an underutilized site. The mailing address for this site is 6144 Broadway. The addition to the store will, will add vigor to the plaza and not negatively affect the community. Utilities are already in place from the previous business entities. Ingress and egress will not be altered. The proposed business would join eight other locations throughout the state of Indiana. Trader Bucks Flea Market offers affordable booth rental for local vendors, craft sellers, and independent sales representatives to sell their wares. Hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, closed on Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. Six management and staff members with an expected investment of $75,000 to $100,000. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance. Petitioner has provided attorney with the lease, and it is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, anything to add?
I do not. Unless you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any you have. I think Sheila did a good job of that. Basically, it's the old Tittles. If the picture that was in the paper, that's the old store that's really been vacant for quite a long time. So that's 30,000 square feet at the end of that building. It'll get filled up as a result of this.
It was actually Basics Food Warehouse after it was Tittles.
Oh, I remember.
Wasn't it Walgreens, too?
Walgreens was next door. That building's been empty for how long, Sheila?
Oh, it's been empty for a while, lot of years.
One question. Upon approval, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
They're aiming, their lease starts February 1st, and they'll probably be open by their expected, well, their rent starts on May 1st, so somewhere between May and, excuse me, between February and May of this year. I mean, they're ready to go. They've been up here two or three times. The fire marshal was in there today. Well, no, I take that back, the sprinkler people were in today, the fire marshal was already off for the day, so that's been taken care of.
So we're looking to be going by spring sometime?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettit.
To Sheila, and then, and then to Richard. Richard knows where I'm probably going with this. Were there any remonstrators at the BZA?
No.
There were no remonstrators? As you know, Richard, this wouldn't require a special exception if the property wasn't rezoned to M2 at your client's request several years ago, which I voted against and I still oppose. We were promised a 250,000 square foot industrial building out there, never got it, right?
And believe me, one of the investors came to the meeting that Pat was at, and Sheila was at, and we just, he's the one who pushed for this, and he tried very hard to get someone to come. They did not.
Well, I will speak as redevelopment commission president, and our colleague is out ill, as we said. I know that Mr. White has chased your client in the condition of the roads and the parking lot out there. So you're coming back to us, he's coming back to us, asking us for some permission. It's going to be under the microscope, Rich. You need to tell Mr. Israel it's going to be under the microscope as to how this thing works, okay? I will probably vote for it, because the building's been vacant so long.
Right.
But it's going to be watched.
Right. I understand, but it's 30,000 square feet. There was a tenant that was sleeping in the property, they got him evicted last week. We're trying, we're doing what we can. It's not as easy to rent down there. We're not getting needless markups, but we're getting something. And we have one other tenant for 50,000. And if those two come in, that should bring small tenants to fill in the other spaces.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Do you think, as part of our conditions, that we allow so much time for Mr. Israel to redo the parking lot? Obviously, that's going to have to be done anyway, if there's any additional traffic coming to the plaza. Does he have any plans he could present to us, that he does have a financial plan to fix the parking lot?
We spent $50,000 on the parking lot last year.
Right.
And so, to get, repave it, I doubt if it's all going to be repaved at once. That's probably a million dollars. And there's, you know, the rents that are generated here are not the rents that are generated anywhere else. The reason these people come is because of the fact that rents are cheap. And if you look at the other sites where Trader Bucks is, they're all over Indiana, so they have some credibility in that there's, I have a brochure here that shows some of their locations. But every one of their locations is in a secondary location that they're filling space that wasn't rented. And so, I mean, part of this is, is you have to generate some income. So to say that he's going to be able to repave the whole parking lot, I can't make that promise. But the thing I can make is, is that he is trying to keep it up, and the more tenants that come in, it will generate the little spaces that are vacant now.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson? On the parking lot itself, we're not asking the entire parking lot this year or next year, but usually with major, major regional malls or even strip malls, they have a phased-in plan. Every one or two years, they're doing sections of the parking lot to make it more palatable and cut down on the cam.
I'm not disagreeing with you, it's just that if you were to take the South Lake Mall as an example, South Lake Mall in their leases, which are, you know, bigger as far as the per square foot rental, they also have CAM charges in those. When you get to these type of centers, you're into a gross lease that's...
I don't know if they're going to so much CAM anymore at South Lake.
Yeah.
So, I think they're relying on that, so.
Right.
All we ask is, he presents some type of phased-in plan where he can, if you cut it up to the five sections, if you cut something to 10, phased-in section every year.
Or at least work on, I mean, let's face it, there's way too much parking for what's there. So if you start by the areas next to the stores, that's where you would want to make sure that where the customers are coming, those areas, the potholes are filled. Are you saying you're going to fill all the way out? I don't think so. I don't think you should, because...
Well, no, the ma, major drive lanes, major parking areas, but then you phase in those other sections at a later point.
Right. And I...
It's a double-edged sword. If the parking lot's a mess, tenants aren't going to want to come anyway. If you kick the tenants, you don't have the cash to fix the parking. So eventually, we have to...
That's why I'm trying to get the cash to help.
I understand. And we'll support that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettit.
Back to Mr. Anderson. Rich, in the packet that Sheila gave us, the last thing is, our outdoor vendor fare season is underway. Does he plan on having an outdoor vendor out on the parking lot at some point?
I've never heard anything about that.
That's a press release for what happened in...
In Marion?
Marion.
Right.
That's something, that's something that he would have to be, that would have to be approved if he wanted to go outdoors.
Right, and I'm going to make that a condition, Sheila.
And that's not a problem.
There's an outdoor event, Rich. He wants to do an outdoor event. He needs to come Sheila, come see Sheila and get the proper permit from Sheila in Costa. All right?
Yeah, I agree.
And then I'm also going to ask the council, since this is a unique use, I think we need to take a look at this and... to take a look at this in six months.
No, if you do that, he won't come.
How long's his lease for?
He's sending a lease line.
Five years. It was two five-year renewals, if I recall right.
Oh, that's, that's actually good news, if they're making that kind of commitment. Okay.
I mean, the thing about it is, you can't pull the rug out from somebody who comes in from another part of the state with a $100,000 investment. Nobody's going to do that. He won't come here. He'll move down the street. Unfortunately, there's space.
Well, with all due respect, Rich, I'm not worried about this operation coming in. I'm worried about the current landowner, and I think Mr. White's worried about the current landowner as well. I don't want to speak for him. He's not here. But from his comments previous, I'm sure that's what the concern is.
Well, he did tell me tonight when he...
It's not this new operation, it's David Israel.
He called me today, and he said he did support this.
Did he?
He called me this afternoon and said the same thing he said to the chairman, is that he had, you know, he was injured in the fall, and he's not feeling well. I mean, it's 30,000 square feet, you know, it's a big, it's a big space.
It's also going to be 30,000 square foot flea market, which I think is neat. I like that, but you also got to think that's also going to need more security measures in that area as well. I think with that type of operation there, it's going to raise our volume with our police department a little bit. I would make sure that Trader Bucks or whatever it is has, and are aware of our camera ordinance, and I think with a space that big, they're going to need a lot more than just, you know, a single camera. So, any help they can give us with security measures will be greatly appreciated.
I mean, there's one of these that's not Trader Bucks in Michigan City where it's a booth. There's another one in South Haven, Michigan, and they seem to work fairly well, actually, because each person has their own booth and has their own items. So, that means that inventory isn't a problem because nobody's paying for inventory.
You could support a lot of small businesses, actually, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I have seen them work. I mean, it's...
So, Mr. Anderson, how about if we just add in as a condition that we do a multi-year parking lot plan and present it to the town council within six months?
I can ask.
Just a plan. I'm not saying, you know, we want to see something on paper to see the commitment, and then that we make sure outdoor events, as Mr. Pettit mentioned, would obviously need approval from the town.
Yeah, I don't know anything about outdoor events, so if he was going to have an outdoor event, I think it's appropriate that you put that in there. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, Mr. President, based on that, I will make a motion to approve, if I get the number right, Sheila, here.
Z-32UV.
Z-32...
UV-7.
UV-7?
1222.
Okay. With the conditions of, that were placed on it by the BZA, along with a parking lot plan to be submitted within six months, and if there's outdoor vendors, they will receive a large gathering slash, what would it be, Sheila?
If, they would have to have, it depends on the length of time, because if it's a one-day, two-day event, that's a special event.
Special event slash large gathering.
That goes through Sheila.
That goes through Sheila, all right.
I will second that motion with the conditions that Mr. Pettit mentioned.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Uszak, and just to clarify, it is petitioner, case number Z-32UV7-1222.
Yes.
All right. Questions or comments on the motions, guys? Attorney General, roll call, please, on this important issue.
Mrs. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Five in favor?
Five in favor, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to old business. Is there any old business before us, Mr. Reardon?
Pardon me, sir.
Any old business tonight?
No, sir.
Moving on to new business. I did mention some board appointments. Going through our list here, excuse me. We have the Stormwater Management Board. There's a appointment we need to make for one position that expired. I would like to reappoint Ralph Simic back to the board. His term would expire then on the end of 2025. Matt?
All right, correct. Mr. President, for your terms.
Moving on to the Plan Commission. There's three presidential appointments. I'd like to reappoint Mrs. Uszak, Mr. Minchuck, and Mr. Pettit back to the Plan Commission. Moving on to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have one vacancy that's being created by the expiration of Mr. Andrew Silvestrowitz. Is there a motion from the council to fill that spot?
Motion, keep Andy on.
Second.
Motion to retain Mr. Silvestrowitz to the BZA by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak. Any other motions? Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let's do it again. Roll call vote.
Mr. Span?
Pass.
Mr. Minchuck?
Stain.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes. Will you pass, which means we come back to you, and then you have to either abstain or vote?
Abstain or vote yes or no.
No.
You don't record a pass.
Okay. I have no vote.
So, you abstain?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll do.
Three in favor, two abstentions.
So, Mr. Svetnov, does that pass then with five members present tonight?
Yes.
It does. Motion carries. Moving on to the Fire Territory Board. Our current members are Jeff Minchuck and Don Span. I think we did that, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did that.
It's in my notes twice, sorry. Moving down to the Redevelopment Commission, I would like to ask Mr. Pettit to remain on the board, also Mr. White and Mr. Hardaway for another year term. We have two openings that the town council appoints. On the board currently is Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Uszak. I'll entertain a motion to retain them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak, to retain Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Uszak to the Redevelopment Commission. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Economic Development Commission, there is a presidential appointment. I'd like to reappoint Mr. Pettit to serve on the board. We have two town council appointments. Currently, it's Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Hardaway. I'd entertain a motion to retain them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uszak, second by Mr. Pettit, to retain Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Hardaway to the Economic Development Commission. Any questions or comments on that? I keep envisioning my arrow going up, so, that's good with no changes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Reardon, have we missed anything? I don't believe so. Oh, yes. Police Commission.
Police Commission.
Thank you. Yes. We have two openings on the Board of Metropolitan Police Commissioners.
These are all town council appointments, Mr. President?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Make a motion to reappoint Bill Polling.
Motion to reappoint Bill Polling to the Police Commission.
Motion to appoint Gene Ward.
One second, Dan. Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck, to reappoint Bill Polling. Questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. And one more opening on the Police Commission. Mr. Span, you had a motion?
Yeah, motion to appoint Gene Ward.
I will second that.
Make a motion to retain Gene Ward as the Police Commissioner. Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Uszak. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. Now, how's our list look, Pat? Pretty good?
I believe it is complete now, sir.
Excellent. Thank you all very much for your indulgence on all that. Any other new business before us? Public comment. We're open for public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for comments. You could queue up, sir. That's okay. You could go over.
Good evening. My name is Darian Collins. I live at 2505 West 65th Avenue in Maryville, and I just had some questions about the Black History Month program, and I just want you to elaborate a little bit for me when you say it's not political, because the very concept was born out of social justice and a political need to have representation of more black Americans on a national scale. So, when you say it's not political, explain to me what that means.
It's not...
And then this is my second question. I think Alonzo Weems is an excellent guest. His mom is my Medicare client. I love that family. So, I think it's a great choice. I miss some of the details. Pardon me. Are there going to be scholarships established with that money? That's $75 a person. Are we going to expand and try to get more people of color? I noticed some of the appointments, you know, are there going to be more black women or more, you know, a dinner is great, but what are you going to do that's going to be progressive, to be more inclusive for people of color, to be present, visible, leading this town? And, you know, scholarships, education, are we going to do something for new business development, entrepreneurs? I mean, what are we going to do with the $75? So, those are my questions.
Okay. Well, we're just getting started. Have no idea where we're going to end up with ticket sales.
You want people to help you with it?
Absolutely. The committees are open.
I would too.
Love to have you help out, so.
You will have to. Can I come to the next meeting?
By, yes, of course.
When is it?
Tomorrow.
What time?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock at the Dean and Barboy Community Center.
I'll be there?
Great.
Yep. Any other comments, sir? You had a comment.
I stay 5430 Johnson Street, Maryville, Indiana, and I have a problem with, my neighbors parking on the sidewalk. I'm a handicapped person. I'm blind and all that, and we, me and my wife try to back out our garages. Four cars in the driveway, and two of them is on the sidewalk, and we cannot see around these trucks to get out on the street. And I have called the police. The police have came out and gave these people tickets, but they disrespect the continued parking, so I want to know if anything I can get done for this.
Well, eventually, I'll tell them, won't they?
I would defer to Sheila for...
I would defer to her.
So, go ahead.
This is one of the issues that we've been having. It's an ordinance violation. I've been speaking with Mr. Rice. He's been calling me, and we've been sending Tiffany out there, and there has been, I know there has been ordinance violations issued, but being that it's on private property, we get kind of our hands tied in regard...
Public thoroughfare. It's a sidewalk. Right.
So, portion of the vehicle is on private property, and then a portion of it is on the sidewalk.
Can I say something?
Yes.
These are walking the dogs that go all the way in the street. The children are going to school. They have to go around to all the way in the street. I just want to act in, but I do not see them. Like a big truck, you know, I have to get outside and get a guy in there because I don't want to get out, so I do want to act in. I have been to just step in.
No, that's fine. What's the address again?
5420 Johnson Street.
That's where the home is.
That's where the home is. I stay 5430.
Ms. Schein, why don't we just ask code enforcement to go out there and see what's going on, and let's knock on some doors and talk to the residents there.
So, 5420...
Johnson Street.
Johnson. That's the house, or is that the house, your house?
That's there.
And that's the house, 5420 Johnson?
Is the problem now.
Problem property.
Okay.
Well, the question also becomes, Mr. President, if they're parking on the side, Costa, you said half's on the sidewalk, half's on private property. Is the private property a hard surface? Because you're not allowed to park on the grass in town.
Yeah, it's where the driveway turns into the sidewalk, and then, you know, a portion of, the front half of their vehicle is in the driveway, and then it's, the driveway's not long enough for those trucks.
Okay.
What's happening is a portion of it is exceeding past the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that's where they're having, and I know Tiffany's been out there numerous times with them.
You're blocking a pedestrian right away, I think.
Exactly.
It's a thoroughfare. Creates public health safety work here.
Absolutely.
Yep.
We will look into it. That's what we'll say right now.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
Hi, my name is Vern Hein. I'm an all-time pioneer from Maryville. I've been a member of the solid waste district for past 25 years. Your representative, Mr. White, was not able to attend the last meeting, so I'd like to give you an update of what's going on. There for a while, we were meeting in the back of this building, and we were good neighbors, but we outgrew it, I guess, and so we now have our own building. It used to be the Girl Scouts Building on Broadway. We've been in there going on to a year, and we've had a lot of extensive remodeling and this and that. Now, we had some bad luck over the Christmas holidays when we had this cold snap. We lost, our pipes froze, and we sustained about $160,000 of damages. So, that's going to set us back. The program was scheduled to open up for the school kids and everything. We do a heck of a job. They're teaching solid waste and about environmental and all that stuff to the children, but the building is going to have to be about half of it renovated because of the water damage, carpeting, all the murals that were on the wall were ruined, and so it's a big mess, but we're going to stick with it, and we enjoy being in Maryville, and it's a good location. It's near Methodist Hospital there off of Broadway. It's a big building. We got room to grow. So, I'd just like to give you an update because Leonard wasn't able to make the last meeting, and like I say, I've been with him 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vern. Any other public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jesse Allen, and I live at 977 West 66th Place, and since we no longer have the star for concerts, would there be anything else in place to take care of that so we won't have to go to Chicago or Hammond for concerts?
Not sure how to answer that. We really don't know yet. Any other comments? Announcements. Our next town council meeting is February 14th at 6:30. The town offices will be closed on February 20th in observance of President's Day. Plan Commission meeting is February 21st at 6:30, and we already talked about the Black History Celebration Dinner on February 23rd. There's details on the town website about that, as well as posters hanging up here at Town Hall. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Did you say you were buying dinner?
No.